Okay. I will call to order. Actually, let me just let people know, we are actually having two meetings tonight. Our first portion is the standard work session. Three topics that we'll cover. And then we'll close the work session and go to the special meeting, which is the discussion for the deliberations. So, I will open the work session, October 8th. Need an approval of the agenda.
Still moved?
Second?
All in favor?
Yes.
Okay. And also, as reminded by Nancy, that for the work session, we've always tried to allow folks to make comments through our little sign-in system. If you have a question for one of the topics that we have, or a comment, you'll pass it up to me and then I'll translate it out. First item is introduction of new city staff. Bruce, you want to?
Yes, we're pleased to have a couple of new folks here. Jason, if you would do your introduction first.
All right. My honor to re-introduce Jenny Thompson-Kiefer. You may remember back in January, around the 4th, when she started, she was our code enforcement officer. And so, we had an officer position open up and she was in the position of flight court. And so, we're very happy to bring her aboard. It's going to be a gigantic loss, because she did an excellent job of code enforcement. As some of you aware, if not most of you, because she's done so many different code enforcement cases since she started, but she's done a great even end with that. And just in the four weeks now, while she's been doing patrol, she's done a great job and has a good sense of humor, very even keeled, and she also shows great ethics already. So, we're very happy to have her. Yes. And your wife, Melissa?
Yes.
Lori, would you like to do your introduction?
Well, I'm very happy to introduce Lori Johnson, my final and last. You're going to be here awhile, right?
Ask for that before.
Anyway, I'm really happy to have Lori on board in our, participating in our finance team. And she's originally the former finance director from the city of Rockaway Beach. So, she knows all about coastal cities. They have the same software there that we do. And so, it's really refreshing to have her on board and to kind of know a lot about what's going on around here ahead of time, so.
She also has a Canyon Beach connection.
Yeah, right back where I'm from. Right now, I'm at high school. I worked nine years at the toll booth at the campus.
Oh, yeah.
I've always lived here.
Yeah.
This is just my community. I live just in the south.
There's a van and it's an easy commute, and so, welcome aboard.
Thank you. That's it for now. That's it? Okay.
I do have a question, Jason. You will be, you will be filling the code enforcement officer position, right?
That sounds like a threat, but we're going to.
I'm not applying, no.
That was not a question, was it?
No. Yes, we have it opened up, and I think it's opened up through the 23rd of this month for applications. But, yes, that's a priority.
Our next item is parks and animal codes discussion. Jeff, or Bruce, or Karen. Whoever.
At the August work session, we brought you some drafted work changes for the committee code that had not been updated since 2005, and there were several items that were no longer applicable, as well as some new items that were added to the code. So, what you have before you tonight are the revisions based on the last discussion that we had with council and office. We're going to introduce Jelaine as our parks committee chair to answer any questions that council may have.
Okay.
Great, no questions?
I do.
Let's see, yeah.
Well, I have a question. I think I asked this before and got shot down for it, but I'll try it again. The definition of park, is that what we're doing, right? Ecola Forest Reserve is not considered a park, is that right?
It's outside the city, oh, excuse me. It's outside the city limits, and it is our forest reserve and watershed, but it is not one of the city parks.
So, remind me again, people can still not build fires there, can still not have horses there, is that right?
Well, the, it is governed and certainly has regulations around no fires and no firearms, and there are a variety of regulations. We have the Ecola Creek Forest Reserve stewardship plan that lays out all of those regulations. I believe horses are allowed in certain areas there, but that's all delineated clearly in the ECFR forest reserve plan, or stewardship plan.
I had another question. On the, on M, in the parks, talks about any event consisting of 50 or more persons must take, let's see, where is it? Yeah, it takes place at the bandstand as a city permitted event. It sounded like, when I first read it, maybe I'm wrong, that the only time that an event with 50 or more persons can take place in any of the parks is at the bandstand. Is that right? Is that what I'm reading?
Yeah, so this really comes back to what, in our most recent discussion since the last time this was before you, was that trying to reconcile the, both the value and the policy that's been in place for a long time about the parks being open space on a first come, first served basis for the public to use. How to reconcile that policy and value with the occasional, or perhaps, you know, going forward, not so occasional, large group or event. And the city's understandable need to be able to plan for those events, to have some permitting around it, to make sure that they're supported, and, and go forward in a way that, that's workable and, and safe. So, we really had some lengthy discussion about this, how to, how to find a way to kind of thread that needle. And what we came to as a compromise that we think will provide some, some advantages, was to have large events, if there's going to be a gathering or an event of 50 or more people, to have that take place at the already exempted bandstand. There's already an exempt, not exempted, but an exception in the code, that the bandstand area can be reserved. That it is in the main city park, which is the largest park, and so, there's likely room for an event to happen, and also room for the public to participate there. And that way, city can have its needs met in terms of permitting large events, but the rest of the city parks and all the park area would be available to the, to the public to use. We really did consider a variety of issues potential to having permitted events in any of the parks. Among them, that this could really, in a place as popular as Canyon Beach, over time, if that became a, more of a trend, it could really limit the public's ability to participate in the parks. And we do already have the beach and other areas that people can have weddings and, and event centers.
So, if you have a family reunion and you think you're going to have more than 50 people at your family reunion, you have to get an event permit first?
Yeah.
Something like that. Do you have an area around the bandstand that is within the permit area?
Well, my understanding is that that is somewhat flexible, maybe staff could speak to that, but that depending on the needs of the event, that that might be able to expand or contract a bit. I think it's a way of identifying the area of the park generally, and then depending on the needs, that could probably be cordoned off or made, made clear where that area is.
I think it's always been referred to as the immediate bandstand area. Bandstand is an immediate area around that. I don't think there's a designated or marked on area, if you will, that's been formal in any capacity. I've just seen it referenced as the bandstand and immediate area.
And then what about, I know there's soccer games that go on there, and I would imagine that they may bring in 50 or more people. Do they have to make a reservation then?
This is something that if it, we could certainly talk about, because I think there are, at this point, not a lot, but maybe an event like that, if you include the spectators, who may or may not always come, you know, at any point, there could be more than 50 people in the park, you know, doing different things, certainly. So, I mean, that's a, that is a question. That's, that's a question. It's not.
We have a Hispanic league here in town, and I think they probably bring in quite a few people in their soccer game.
Soccer, they still do a permit for that, do they?
No, and they have a tournament every year, I think near the end of it where all the teams meet and play.
There's also, you know, Little League type sports that occur there.
So, would they have to have permits for that?
We were thinking more about the kind of event, and I think the thing that, that raised the question in the first place was a, an extended kind of a wedding party event. This was a number of years ago, but the, the question of having the park space become event space. I, as I'm, you know, thinking about this, and that, something like Little League or soccer game, that, that seems like less of a reserved event, and more the kind of activity you would expect to see in a park, which is people get together, they play games, they have a league, and that has always been on a first come, first served basis, and I think at this point still is. I mean, everybody knows when the games are, but they don't have a reservation for that. Yeah. And if we need to tweak the language there, we could do that around sports.
This also kind of focuses on the city park. I know of two events at Nekus that could gather more than 50 people easily, that are already occurring, and that would be a fun run situation, or the fat bike. So.
Fat bike has a permit?
Yeah, they have a permit, but according to this rule, it's at the bandstand. So, I think the permitting, what I was looking at when I started passing this out is separating the general rules for parks from the permitted rules, so that they're not meshed into these paragraphs. Pull out those things that are permitted into a separate section, so that they can be defined a little easier. And there's a couple, one of the good ones is D. You got the exception for the bandstand stuck in the middle of a paragraph, that really, in the second, the third sentence should basically be moved up. But then I thought, well, just take that out, put it in its own component, so that permitting can then be focused for what the events are, rather than the locations. Because I think Nekus is going to be a park that I think more and more opportunity is going to turn up, especially if we do wind up getting the school gym. That's one thing. So, M really disturbs me, just because of its severe limitations to the bandstand. L kind of has that same specific to the bandstand feel to it. The, wait, wait. The other one that I was concerned about is I, and this is for a totally different reason, because this is about the horses. The whole last two sentences, horses are allowed on public roadways, rights of way and the beach, all horses must be bucketed, those really don't have any bearing on parks. I don't even see why that's in there. That could be in a different place in our ordinance system. That, it just, you know, if they're not going to be allowed in the parks, why have that statement? I'm just kind of simplifying things.
They are allowed at the park, parking lots.
Yeah.
The one, the one parking lot, West Les Shirley parking lot, is the access point, the parking point and the access point for the horses. And this, that language is then repeated in the animal code, so it's consistent.
Doesn't need, but it just doesn't need to be here. So, I would, I would, I would really seriously relook at the permitted things as separate from the general rules of parks.
So, as we were discussing this, I think the question about location and the thing that brought us to the focusing in on the bandstand area and having one location for large events, was the concern that with the park space, if any of the park spaces are open for permitted large events, then that could really result in a, an impact on the public being able to use the spaces. This is a beautiful city. It's a very popular place for people to go, and, you know, if I were holding events or in charge of organizing events, boy, the park seems like a really great idea, because, you know, you just go to the city, get a permit, and you can have your big event. Now, the, the, that would address the city's concerns about being able to regulate and support large events. But I think what it doesn't balance as well is the concern about our city parks primarily being open spaces for the public to use on a first come, first served basis. So, we were trying to find a middle ground where, where we could identify an area, in this case, an area, and maybe it would be, you know, limiting it to certain areas, but so that there, it wasn't a case of just getting a permit and then having your, any event anywhere, at any of the parks, at any time. In the summer, that could mean a lot of events in the parks and not a lot of discretionary space for the public to use. So, you know, that, that was what was driving the thinking on it, was just trying to see if there could be a geographical place that would serve that as well as possible, knowing that, that there is the beach also, which is a beautiful outdoor setting.
I, I totally understand the thinking process. I don't think you found the middle. If you're looking for a middle ground, it's still heavily weighted, so that's my take on it. I think there, I know there's a way out there somehow, to create a balance, so that in the rare event that we have, the type of events that are best served by the parks, that's not every event. So, in the case, a good example is a fun run. You could start the fun run from the bandstand. I can understand that. But it actually starts better at Nekus because of the access to the beach. So, you know, in that sense, there might be a way to prescribe certain events, so that it's not every event possible. That would be hard, but it might be a way to do it, trying to define some stuff. Maybe jump it up to a higher number of folks. 50 folks, maybe if you took it up, that would limit it even more. I don't know. But that's just, I'm just one of five here, so that's my take on it.
I think you have a good point on Nekus Park, especially if we are able to develop this school into a community center of some kind, we're going to have more than 50 people there for, for events, so that's a good point. But I like, I understand your point as well. I have no, no answer.
Don't we think at the point that we would develop it, that we could change it? But I, I think it's nice to have a handle on how many people should be, should tick off any event.
Yeah, and I think the, the 50 number came up just more in discussions around permitting and, and permitted events and the number that would, that threshold, in terms of what the city would, would want to have.
Can't the location of the permitted event be handled administratively? So that if they're applying for Nekus, administration looks at it, says it'll work or it won't work, and either grant or decline a permit application. If it makes more sense to have it at the bandstand, permit it there. I understand the, you know, it used to be first come, first served everywhere, but there are reasons to have a permit, and so, law enforcement and sanitation, everything's already addressed. But, and the bandstand seems like one of those logical places, because there's power and light, and kind of any event location. But rather than putting in the ordinance, what the location for an event is, leave that up to the administration, just say an event of 50 or more, needs to have a permit, and part of that permit is the location they request, and administration could make a judgment, that's not going to work there, and here's an alternative that works for it, and you can still reserve it, but after working with the, the city staff to agree on a location, rather than trying to anticipate every possible event that could come along and say, well, for this event, Nekus, for this event, the bandstand, for some other event, we don't know what it is, you know, maybe it makes sense even somewhere else.
Well, I think the driving idea behind limiting the permitted event area to one area in this case, but the, the, the idea behind that is, it certainly, from an administrative point of view, I think, could work to permit an event for any locate, any of the park locations. But it really runs counter to that fundamental idea that there are no reservations in our city parks. I think that's stated in the original code there, that our parks are open spaces for the public to use on a first come, first served basis. And so, while there certainly may be some areas, some, some locations that would be preferable for certain kinds of events, by opening up that door, what it does is there's really no outside limit on how many events can be permitted in our parks, for example, over a summer. So, you may end up having a fun run in one park, and a wedding in another park, and a concert in another park, and something else, and all of a sudden, the public is really being limited and squeezed in terms of that overriding idea of our parks are open spaces for, for everyone to use. And so, we were really trying to limit it by saying, well, we already have this area that people can reserve, you can make a reservation for the bandstand. So, if we just talk about that as a, as a place to have these larger events that might require more planning and permitting, and then the rest of the parks can be open space, and certainly, I, I understand that any, any group could make a, a case for, yeah, but, you know, if we're here, that's going to serve our, our particular event better. And I think what we were really just grappling with, and we really did go around a lot about this as well, if it can be anywhere, then what's, how do we actually keep the parks And if there are no permits, then large groups can kind of show up and the city doesn't have any way of, of having those kind of regulatory planning needs met. So, it was really to try to limit the number of, of opportunities for having permitted spaces in all the parks. So, I mean, that's just kind of, I think, what, what was, what was.
While you were speaking, the one idea that came up was, what you're saying is how to limit, you know, another way would be a number of events.
Mm-hmm.
You could say one event a month, boom. Or so many events a year. I don't know, again, you know, how, how we get around legalities and stuff like that, but that would, you know, that would give you a way to limit things. My other sense is just, I go through city park almost every day, walking the dogs somewhere over that direction. The one area, other than the playground and the tennis courts, that gets used are the picnic benches by the bandstand. So, if anybody's going to be displaced because of a scheduled event, it's the only people who are using anything but the playground and the tennis courts. It's rare to see anybody in the baseball field. So, if there was a space that you would be more likely to not have anybody using it, that would be for an event, would be the baseball field. I don't know. So, the actual use of our main city park, Nekus isn't really understood that much as a park yet, and that's growing, but sometimes you almost need a few events so people recognize it as a park. To have the band over there, when they do the bandstand and they have the music on the Sundays, it feels like a park. Generally, often, you know, in the middle of summer, there's hardly anybody over there. So, which is great for the residents, because they know it's there. I don't know, I just, I think there needs to be a better balance and some way to figure this out, so that, yes, events can happen, but under restrictions.
So, we can go back to the drawing board on L and M?
I guess so. Keep working at it. Obviously, there's no big rush on this, but I would like to get it right.
Yeah. One question I, I do have, given that we, we have been, this has really been the sticking point, trying to find that balance here. The other, the other changes to the code, and I, I take your point about I, I think that that perhaps evolved, that additional language about horses, that may have evolved over time, because there was the initial language in I, which was no person shall allow horses under their control in any park. I think that was the original line, period, and then that got developed a bit with the specifics. But taking that aside, if the other changes are, look good, and particularly with the horses, because the, the bucketing of the horses is something that we've really been hoping to get in place sooner than later, and I wonder if there are parts of these revisions that could perhaps be adopted, and then we can go back and continue working on the question about permitted events and, yeah, just, that, that would be L and M, item L and M, or section L and M.
I do have a question on the horses again. It says horses are allowed on public roadways, right, rights of way and on the beach. Would rights of way be parking lots?
Not parking lots per se. I believe the rights of way are the roads themselves, is that correct? And the beach is considered a right of way also?
They're separate, not a parking lot.
Okay, it doesn't, does it say anything in here about not allowed in parking lots?
Number five.
Oh, yeah, or city parking lots, never mind. Okay. I'm thinking of a private, particular, specific private parking lot that I've seen horses on, that they, that, they would still be allowed to be on that.
As long as they are bucketed.
Yeah.
Well, I don't see why we couldn't go ahead and approve the new section under Title Six, animals, with the wording that's been suggested here, and get that off the table so that we can move ahead while we continue to wrestle with permitting, first come, first served, number of people and location. I don't know, we'll get there this year.
Sticky one, but the other ones could then move ahead, yeah. And, and the other K was another one. And, and all of the items in red would be the other revisions that have not, as far as I know, had, had a lot of question about.
I have just one other little nitpicky thing. It's mentioned a couple of times as posted by the director. We don't have a director, do we? Parks director? Yeah, so that, that's just an old.
I think that's old language and.
It's in here a couple of times.
Okay, so we can look for that.
I agree with my conclusion, as possible, but course out some of these. Can we go ahead and make final, and then we go back to the drawing board on letter D and on the L? Are you, are you good with K?
K's fine.
I am.
Yeah, K, K actually.
On letter I, is there further revisions of it and striking the sentence that says horses are allowed on public roadways, right of way, and on the beach? Striking that sentence and everything else stands.
That's fine.
And then that pretty much addresses our horse issue, and that can be put together.
Yep.
Just to be clear, Karen, you, the intent of it is, is to just make sure that people, if they're using the less surely parking lot, that they take care of the waste of their horse, right?
That, that the horses are bucketed for manure catch at all times, no matter where they are.
Right.
Whether they're in the park, the right of way, parking lots.
The beach.
If they're in designated areas or in the city limits, they should have the manure buckets on.
Be it on headlock.
That doesn't apply to the elk.
If you can catch them.
And then, was there a question about D?
D's got the bandstand stuck in the middle of the paragraph.
Oh, I see the placement of that, uh huh.
So the revisions to letter C are, we've agreed that we're okay on that one?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
All right, so I have letter D, M, and L that we will take back to the drawing board and everything else, including C, E, K, and Chapter Six, addressing the horses, is okay with the problem?
Just one little question on C.
Yes.
If the fire dancers were to come back for Fourth of July.
Well, if they don't catch on fire.
They're okay, or?
It's a personal, it's a personal utensil, right?
Okay.
Are we, are we good with one ordinance about that horses, but we're still working on the arts ordinance?
I think what we're doing is firming up everything in red except D, L, and M.
D and L, because they're two ordinances. Correct. So there is part of the parks that they are approving, the letters that I cited. And the ones that they are not approving is letters D, M, and L. You're not going to be two ordinances on the same ordinance, I mean, are you, or are we?
They're separate.
No, 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 I mean the parks. Are you going to break that as an ordinance and then redo it again, or are we still working on, I'm just trying to get my notes correct on that section.
If I, if I can, I think that we're going to take action on the items that we've agreed on with the idea, and we'll move forward with that in November. And then with the idea that there, there will be a follow-up, or could be a follow-up on the other items, and then that would be an additional ordinance to modify what we already have.
Well, we'll have two ordinance in November, and then we do another one later. Because animals is separate from parks, they're two separate ordinance.
So we can bring the animals back for a reading, because that's the only change.
You approved, you approved your, your animal aspect tonight, and I bring it to you for a vote next month.
Yep.
If the actual wording that you approved tonight.
Yeah, that's attachment B.
Correct.
Yeah.
As well as I, that's in your parks. That's also for your animals under your parks. So that would stand, striking that sentence, horses are allowed on public driveway and the beach, striking that, everything else stands. So that addresses your animal aspect, okay?
And just so I understand, is the question on D, just the placement of it in the sequence here, that D might be better placed somewhere adjacent to the conversation about the bandstand?
Yeah, just pull the bandstand into its own little thing, and that way it doesn't jumble up some of the other comments.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next up is, sorry, another question. Laurie? There she is. This is our fourth quarter finance report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors. So tonight, I bring you the final numbers for our fiscal year-end June 30, 2019. These numbers are currently under audit by our auditors, and they had their fieldwork here last week, and so things are looking pretty good with that regard. So these really should be the numbers that you see in your audit report in December, so unless something crazy happens. But I'm not anticipating that. So like I said, we're under audit right now, a lot of work goes into that. My department starts July 1st, making sure that we're reconciling and capturing all the expenses that need to be in the June 30 year-end. We work on all the revenues, capturing those. For instance, transient room tax is paid in July, but we have to get that accrued into June because that revenue was earned during that period. So there's just a lot of things that we undertake during the summer months to get you this report. And so just wanted to let you know a little bit about the audit process that we go through. And so these are the numbers that went to the auditor, and that's what they were looking at last week. So on my first page here, as usual, you see the same format as all the other quarterly reports. Our cash position, total citywide cash on hand at the end of the year was $5,216,930. And that compares to June 30, 2018, which was $4,436,284. So we're up $967,405, which is pretty good, I think. The next little green box there is our debt outstanding. That was reduced this year by making principal payments in the amount of $410,000. We currently owe $3,615,000 on our two bonds. Talk a little bit about the general fund. Revenues are at 99.2% of the budget. And we didn't hit our target of 100%, and that's because we had two grants that did not come to fruition, that amounted to $271,500. And so if you kind of take that out of the equation, we're up about $225,000 comparing that to the budget. So the expectation on most of our revenues did come through in our budget estimates. If we look at here, let me see. Next item I wanted to talk about was page three. This is showing our quarterly data for April through June, and also our current fiscal year-to-date, and where we are with budget. So I think I just talked about that. On the next item, I wanted to talk about page 11 a little bit, kind of sticking with the general fund here. I've been doing this top 10 general fund revenue now, it's kind of fun to look at this, comparing it to the prior year. We have all the usual suspects again, so nothing much changed there. Room tax obviously is number one. 69.7% of our general fund revenue is represented by room tax. And then second to that is property tax, and third is franchise fees. Interest income and state revenues reversed themselves from the prior year. Interest income used to be number five, and it's now number four. We've been able to get some good interest income from the LGIP, which is the local government investment pool. The interest rates, though, are now trending down. I think in July, they started lowering. They were at 2.75% for a lot of the time in our last fiscal year. So we may see that kind of reducing a little bit for our current fiscal year. So that's the top 10. Move on to page four, where we talk about general fund expenditures. I'm always looking to see, you know, that we're not exceeding the budget. If you look at line six, that's the total executive department, that's under budget. It's at 95% of the total budget. And that is where we have our spending authority that you approved for us, the council did. However, we do have some programs within the department that did exceed the budget. If you look at line three, that program exceeded the budget by $71,560. However, there was enough room in the other line items to kind of absorb that. So we're still kosher with the state, but, you know, that might be something that kind of jumps out at you, 123% of the budget. Another item, so we're good with executive, the planning department's fine, that's at 53 because of the grant not realized, otherwise there would have been more spending. Public Works Department is good. You'll see line 11 did exceed the budget. So there's that, not quite as much as the other one, but still fine. Public Safety's at 79.7%. And then the non-departmental's in at 80. So we get total expenditures for the general fund are 81% of what we budgeted. So we're going to see a little bit of savings there because, you know, the authority given wasn't spent. So that's helping our ending fund balance greatly, and the fact that we've got, our revenues were pretty strong. At the bottom here, you can see on line 23, we started the year with 1. roughly $3 million. In beginning fund balance, we added revenues and a $5.4 million. Our expenditures were $5 million roughly. And so we end up with an ending fund balance of $1,668,827, which I think is a pretty good place to be. We budgeted that we would start July 1st with $1 million, so we're about $668,000 ahead. So I think that's a good place to end the year in the general fund. Page five, you can see the rest of the funds are presented here. We've got, we'll talk a little bit about tourism and arts and transient room tax a little later. You can see on line eight, under County Transient Room Tax Fund, we've got our first distribution from the county that they're distributing to the cities. This was for the quarter, January 1 through March 31, and that totaled $48,136. I've had discussions with the county, and they won't be remitting any more money until next year, July. And I think we can expect to either get four quarters or five quarters from them at that time, since they still owed us for April through June, which they didn't pay us. And so I'm not sure if they're going to pay the four quarters or five quarters, but we'll find out. So that will be good. RV Park, there's another over expenditure here on line 23. We spent 100.36% of the budget, and it should have been 100% or less. So, line 23 on page five. Under program expenses, we had a budget of 1.645 million, and we spent 1.651 million. So I think it's roughly $5,000 or something, $6,000 over. I analyzed it before year-end happened, and I thought we were going to be covered, but because I could have brought a budget adjustment forward for that, but I just thought we were good. So that's how that happened. Page six. You know, overall, I think three funds in these sections, not counting the general fund, had decreasing fund balances. One of those was the water fund, storm drain fund, and debt service. Debt service is okay, because I kind of expected to kind of reduce that through the budgeting process. The water fund, I think, well, that was intentional because we wanted to spend that money on some projects this year and transfer that to the reserve fund to accomplish that. Storm drain, storm drain kind of struggles a little bit sometimes, needing money from the general fund. This year, we adopted a resolution to increase the storm drain fees, and I think that took effect in August, for sure. And so that's going to really help next year with that fund balance. Okay, so let's go to page, page seven is our Administrative Services Fund. We always have revenues equalling expenditures because we charge out all of our costs to other funds during the year. Page eight is our transient room tax, which is the combined all funds presentation. I think we did really well this year. If you look at line two in the middle of this report, you'll see we ended up with $4,580,560 in transient room tax. And, you know, our budget was $4,396,070. So we exceeded the budget, and we also exceeded the prior year total by $310,14. So pleased that, with that, that our expectation during budgeting was realized. So that's always good. So try to be conservative in this area, since it's such a large revenue stream for the city. You can see that we budgeted in year-end 2020, $4,791,744. That's on line one in the middle, over in that total column. And so we just have to realize $210,884 more in this year, and that will meet our budget. So I think that's really doable. And you can see below, I have these percentages, so if you want to know what the percentage increase was, it was 7.259%. And I have all the percentages down there, so you can see year-to-year, quarter-to-quarter, how we're doing. Every quarter in 2019 exceeded the prior year quarter. Page nine is our Tourism and Arts Fund. You can see the council approved expenditures of $300,464 for the various programs. There are 11 of them. This fund raised $400,799. We had a beginning fund balance of $263,875. We brought in the revenue I just stated, and minus the distributions, the fund has an ending fund balance of $364,210. So that's a little bit of a reserve there that I think they're trying to keep on hand. Page 10 is kind of a nice comparison to the last fiscal year, full 12 months. You can see that we had $90,892 more in general fund revenue than we did the prior year, so that's good. Page 12 is our fixed assets. These are also shown as capital outlay in our budgeting, and when you look at the revenues and expenses, these are shown as capital outlay. What happens during, when you get your audit report, these end up as fixed assets on full accrual financial statements. So I've got them presented in the most expensive first, coming down, and I've got the comparison to the prior year here. Fixed asset expenditures in 2019 were $780,976. Our most expensive project this year was Ash Street Waterline at $184,000 roughly. And then you can see S-Curve Waterline coming in second, Fan Filter Bed Media, and so forth. Most of these are public works projects, with the exception of a police 2019 Chevy Tahoe. And shout out to Jason.
Actually, that was for Gunnar.
Oh, exactly. Yes, got to take care of Gunnar. We also had a backup system, and that is our IT guy, Rusty, he was responsible for that, getting that going. And fire alarm and sensors here in city. And fire alarm and sensors here in City Hall, we got that so we can know if there's a fire. There are three projects here that are still currently in progress. So we're, July 1, we're still working on them and that's number eight, 10, and 11. So in 2018, we spent $520,770 on our fixed assets. And I think that, I wanted to mention the water fund a little bit. Because that was the only utility that didn't meet its targeted water charges revenue. And so, I don't know, I think it just shows the need for maybe, looking at maybe an increase to keep that fund, you know, going. I think, yeah, it was, we had a budget of $1,245,000 and the revenue came in at $1,231,593. And so there was a variance of $13,407 that we were short. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that didn't quite hit our target there. But overall, I think things are pretty good.
Questions for Lori?
I'm looking here at public restrooms litter. That's our favorite topic.
That's our problem.
Okay, so I'm saying, I'm seeing current fiscal year to date, $220,834. Is that for everything having to do with the public restrooms plus litter pickup as well? So that would be any repairs that you have to make and, okay. And once again, we can't take any of that out of transient room tax?
We're, we're.
We're trying. Okay, I just want to make sure we're still working on that.
Yes, Lori, when you had your conversation with the county about the upcoming payment in July, did they give a reason at all?
Well, their ordinance does say they will distribute it annually.
Okay.
Yeah, so that was.
To me, that would mean January, but are they, is there reasoning that it would have more to do with the fiscal year then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they're on the same fiscal year.
I'm just trying to understand it.
Yeah.
Would they offer to give us the interest accrued from, from it?
I don't think I asked them, but Bruce may have.
Yeah, and I've had a conversation with the new administrator and he says, yes, it is, it does say in our ordinance, you're not supposed to get the money yet. But he's working with staff to see if there's some ways to loosen that up for some projects we have going.
Okay, thank you, boss. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I have, I do have one more question, sorry. I have one more question. AHRAP is 123% open. Any idea what that is about?
I did not dive into the specifics of that, no. And I did have one more comment. Mike earlier in the evening brought to my attention a correction that needs to be noted. On my report, I said current year-to-date expenses exceed revenues by $372,47 in the general fund. I should have reversed those. It should read, current year-to-date revenues exceed expenses. Thank you, Mike.
Slid that one past you guys.
He didn't have to admit it.
I can, I'm fine.
Okay, thank you, Lori.
Thanks, Lori.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Lori. Keeping us all straight here. Okay, that ends our work session, so I will close the work session and open the special meeting for dune management plan deliberations. Last night, for those who weren't here, I see a few faces that weren't, the house was full. We were ending our fifth public hearing for the foredune management. Got a massive amount of information, it's in my little gizmo here, so all these letters that have been coming in and discussions and facts that the staff has placed in here. Most of, I believe all of that is available on the website if anybody wants to look at it. So, last night, we talked about proceeding forward with our discussion on a by-topic basis. Bruce, do you want to?
Mr. Mayor, if I can, I think that it might be appropriate if both Jeff and Bill kind of take us back to the beginning when we had our first meeting and we talked about what pieces of the puzzle you would be dealing with and trying to sort these things out and also some of the requirements to back up any decisions that you, you might make. So if we can just kind of do that as a reminder, it might help us be expedited a little bit.
Okay, remind away.
Okay, and some of this is going to echo Mayor Steidel, councilors, some of this will echo what we talked about back a month ago at the science meeting, when we kicked off the public hearing process, eliminating some of the pieces that we've already been through, the public testimony. But just sort of to set in context again, what you're undertaking here is a land use legislative procedure. You're setting policy for a large part of the city, the dune front. This isn't quasi-judicial, you're not sitting in as a judge on a particular permit. So you are creating policy. This is when you have the broadest authority. You, you're supposed to be biased. This is when you get to set the policy for the city and say, this is what I was elected for. So, you know, you don't have to worry about being unbiased. What do you have to worry about? And this ties back to, in particular, the statewide planning goals and the criteria in your land use regulation. I'll leave the land use regulations to Jeff. I'm going to focus a little bit more on the goals. And there are two, again, the land use planning structure, every city and county has to have a conference of plan that sort of sets out their vision for the city and then their land use regulations that how that get, vision gets implemented. And the two critical pieces for this are goal two and goal 18. Goal two is you've got to have an adequate factual basis for your plan and it's got to make sense. So even though you get broad discretion in terms of setting policy, you can't just make it up on the fly arbitrarily. You've got to have a factual basis that supports it. For example, if the entire beach was eroding, you probably wouldn't have a factual basis to allow dune grading, grading. That isn't the case here, you know, so you do get to, to look at that, but you've got to tie the facts into the base. The other critical goal is goal 18, beaches and dunes, which allows implementation policy number seven, allows cities and counties to allow dune grading. It does not require cities to, to allow dune grading. As I think you've heard, Cannon Beach first allowed dune grading in 1998. It adopted a plan and set some regulations then, and this is a sort of comprehensive look at what are we going to do in the future? And so with that, I'll turn it over to Jeff to talk a little bit more about the criteria in your plan and also the issues that you're going to face. But critically, you know, you're setting policy and this is your, your chance.
And so I have, as usual, a PowerPoint if we need it. But I did that to guide us and also to give any public opportunity to also look at the different elements, because we're working really through four different documents. We're going to be working with the Allen Report. Do we or don't we want to adopt that comprehensive plan? Do we amend that? We keep it the same? Or do we ask for new amendments? Then the foredune management plan, which was redone based upon the new science from the Allen Report. So if we want to see those changes and how they structure, all the way down to what I deal with every day, the zoning ordinance. And so I think one of the things that we want to, we talked about a kind of a hybrid approach of taking it by topics and then seeing how the parts play together. What I tried to do today is put together that into by topics, the different areas that we might want to look at each piece from comprehensive plan and foredune management all the way down to the zoning ordinance changes for each one of those as we go section by section through some of those documents. So when we spot, when we start at that ground level, those zoning ordinance changes where I deal with, when someone comes in with seeking a permit for grading, one of the reasons I think it's a, it's a good point of reference to start from that is because if you look at our chapter 1742 oceanfront management overlay zoning ordinance, it starts out with shoreline stabilization, foredune breaching, foredune grading, and then it has a section of about 12 different items that each plan has to have in it. And so we can go topic, you know, each section through that, but the way that this does, when it was presented in the science, all the way down, you really have three different types of grading. You have the grading, foredune grading, which is what we're doing a plan for, but then as part of that foredune grading, you have maintenance grading that is done often yearly to maintain that foredune grading plan that you have set in place. And then you have remedial dune grading, which if, if the sand gets, inundates your structure or threatens to inundate your structure, that you have this right to push that sand back. So there's really three different types and they play together in some fashion within our zoning ordinances and within each one of those different four levels. Procedurally, how you want to do that, like I said, I put together a PowerPoint. We don't have to use it. I'm happy to just kind of walk through, would bring up items if we need to, but I'll leave that to you and then if you have any questions during the process from Bill or I, we're always happy to answer it.
Like I was saying, topics. I went through the topics today, made my notes. I kind of went down to the bottom and I worked my way up because I was going for the low hanging fruit first. Just some of those are a little easier to talk about as far as getting us warmed up and into the discussion. But I'm happy to go with wherever the council wants to start. Like Jeff said, he has a PowerPoint, we could follow that or if somebody wants to jump right in.
The PowerPoint is the, the different levels of grading or is it the zoning ordinance?
It is basically from the topic level, a discussion.
So let's go to the PowerPoint.
Okay.
Is that okay?
That's fine. Bring back one of them, Bruce. One bank, it's a little too dark for me to see what I'm doing.
Okay, so as we said, the four documents, this is what I had just went over and I wanted to kind of touch on how it's structured. In fact, one of the things I'd like to get to if we need to, you'll see that number three, foredune grading, then you have the elements under there that need to be in the foredune grading plan. You'll see down on 11, you have maintenance foredune grading. Why that's repeated as K and 11 baffles me from, from, and I don't think the person that's administering it should be baffled by the ordinance of why it says. So we, I want at least clarify that when we go through the ordinance, zoning ordinance and clean that up. Okay? And then what you're doing, as Bill suggested, you need to stick with statewide planning and then of course, agree with comprehensive plan changes. And then the two things within the comprehensive plan, they have to be consistent with it, but it also not adversely affect the ability of the city to satisfy land and water use needs. These are the different elements of the comp plan that we'll be dealing with as we'll see in by the topic areas. The one thing that might, you might want to first discuss, or at least needs to be on your radar to discuss, it was brought up, why Chapman Point is not in the comprehensive or the, it should be part of the foredune plan. And I would suggest that foredune management, number nine, under the comprehensive plan and 10, those two, and I'll read number nine to you. Grading or sand movement necessary to maintain views or to prevent sand inundation may be allowed for structures in foredune areas only if the area is committed to development or is within an acknowledged urban growth boundary and only as part of an overall plan for managing foredune grading. The city's foredune management plan covers all foredunes, from the south city limits to the north city limits. The plan allows grading to maintain views in the presidential streets, sand management area, and in the Breakers Point sand management area as shown on the maps with these names. So that is the closest we get to saying kind of a comprehensive plan that we have for foredune grading. But is that enough? I think that's something we may want to discuss further.
Question there.
Sure.
Remedial grading and maintenance grading could apply to the entire beach regardless of these management areas?
I would say that as a current, as a currently, the way it's currently written and the way it's currently administered, a maintenance plan is to maintain an already approved foredune grading plan. So that would have to be something that we have already in place.
Well, it says maintenance, address blowouts, beach access, other things, not just what was any previous dune grading.
Yeah. And you're correct that remedial is allowed throughout the entire city. Maintenance, as Jeff pointed out tonight, there, there are two different sections of maintenance. One sort of anticipates that maintenance is going to come after, you know, foredune grading for views, but there's another piece that, that is not quite as clear about where it comes in. And I think what Jeff was suggesting, to clean it up so that, you know, you've got maintenance of the dune grading and you've got remedial. And those two really should be separate categories, if that makes sense. So in answer to your question, remedial is allowed throughout the city and dune grading is only in specific areas.
What about that second maintenance, the one that's a little unclear? Where is that allowed?
So if you look at the language in it currently as, as proposed, it is, talks about it as part of a, and let me find it, and K, that's K, and the other one is? 11, okay. So maintenance foredune grading, it says 11A, the affected area was previously graded pursuant to an approved foredune grading plan. So the maintenance on, under both of them anticipates that it's part of a foredune grading plan. You know, one says, I think the way it broke down is when you put together a foredune grading plan, you've got to have a maintenance program. And then the later one, I think, was intended to say, if you want to change the maintenance in that foredune grading plan, this is how you do it, but it just wasn't as clear as it should be. But both of them are tied to, you know, a foredune grading plan. But both of them are tied to, you know, a four dune grading plan.
Would it be better to state on areas outside of a current maintenance or graded area, that if there is going to be some sort of sand movement within an open area, it's just called remedial?
Yeah, and, and that's really what it is, is making that explicit, that, you know, the four dune grading plan for the rest of Cannon Beach outside of the presidential and, and Breakers Point is remedial. You know, that's.
So what I, what I might, I'm trying to find a ref, example, on my, the wayside. If we were clearing part of the handicap ramp there, and this is a city project, that's not relating to a building or a structure, so it doesn't have all the remedial definitions that are built into the radial, but it's a maintenance plan to maintain the dune that's right there, which isn't much, but it's something.
I read this as being, maintenance covers the entire dunes where you need to address blowout, or serious erosion, or a undercutting, or a beach access, it's already an approved beach access. That is not part of a four dune management plan that anticipates grading for views. I think complicating this whole thing, if we didn't have grading for views, we would still have a need for remedial, to remove sand from a structure, from part of a structure. We still have a need for maintenance grading to address beach erosion and, and blowouts, cuts, access, safety access, we'd still need that. Without a plan for grading for views being in place, all those things are still necessary. But you can't just say you can only do it if you also agreed to grade for views. And that's, it would be just addressed.
That makes sense, that's.
That's not how it's written. It's not how, you know, I, I mean, I would understand that approach, that's not how it's written, and I don't see how someone coming in to do my job could interpret that.
Well, let's go back a little further. This is not enacted. This is a plan, the planning department, or the planning commission took a look at it and recommended, and we have not done that yet, that we at least start off by saying, well, we grade for views. Period. Is that going to be permitted? And if it's permitted, then these are the conditions you need to look at. If it's not permitted, much of this goes away. You'll still need however, remedial grading and maintenance grading. So, I think we're getting way ahead of ourselves if we don't address the big elephant in the room, and that is grading for views.
Yep.
Rather than going through this item by item and item by item, as though we're going to grade for views.
That's actually, if, once we get past the goal eighteen, and then whether we're going to go topic based or document based, and we chose kind of a hybrid base, the next slide is of course what you just said. So, my recommendation would be to either consider this, or to say, well, which parts do we want to get into if we're not going to deal with this?
We have a draft proposal from the planning commission, or a comprehensive plan. And I guess I would like this as a work session, go on a special meeting. I would like to make a motion to prohibit grading for views, or maintain, grading for maintained views, developing views, or improving views. And go right on through and eliminate all future references, by future, I mean further in the document, that pertain to grading for views. And I can go through those lines online if you'd like to, but I think that's the first thing that needs to be addressed for this council. Are we going to go through this year after year after year, forever? Or are we going to recognize ponderance of testimony before this council that is in opposition to grading for views? No objection to grading for safety, for access, for inundation, but I think we've got to get that behind us, or agree that we're all happy with grading for views. It will greatly reduce the amount of effort we go through by hours and hours and hours, for ever and ever and ever. So, my, my motion is to amend the comprehensive plan, and obviously from that, amend the ordinances.
Right.
To restrict, or to not permit grading for views.
I'll second it for purposes of discussion.
Thank you, Nancy.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend the comp plan to not permit grading for views, seconded, discussion.
Well, I'm, I'm happy to discuss it, and I just, I don't know how the rest of you feel, but I, I sort of viewed this as possibly going on for, for more than a few sessions. I'm, I'm not sure how this is going to play out, but I would like a, a rather in-depth discussion about this particular topic.
Yeah, I kind of was thinking the discussion happens first, because that's what we normally do, but, I, I agree, no, I'm just, I'm just saying, I, I agree with the fact that I think once we vote one way or the other, there's still a lot of discussion to hammer out what we are going to be doing with all the other aspects of dune management, so.
Yeah, we'll still have to address revegetation, and the time of the year, and permitting requirement itself, and how much sand can be moved in the, in the maintenance program, how much setback you need for remedial, and I think there's a number of points that we can discuss there. Even if we were to prohibit dune grading for views, there's still a number of things we have to do, but we don't just stop there.
I've been thinking about this a lot, clearly from all of the discussions that we've had, and all of the input from the letters, and just my whole sense of having lived in that town for a long time and watched these dunes grow. My big feeling that I got from all the details that people said, but there was a sense that came to me, that the term, the three words, grading for dunes, excuse me, grading for views, was the one thing that I think caused more rancor than anything else. It's those three words that create the sense of entitlement. It's those three words. So my sense was, is there a way to re-focus the effort of what our policy is towards managing the dunes for the health, safety, and natural aesthetic value of what a dune is? I think we can do that. And I think in that, when we create dunes, and when we actually start working on how a dune is, we can't go back. I don't think we can go back to where it was, because actually there were no dunes. Four dune of Cannon Beach is basically Ocean Street, of what it was. And so, I think we're, we're, we need to look forward from what we have, and try and figure out a way to create a dune that is specifically Cannon Beach. And the term grading for reviews was the one thing that was really disturbing me about the whole process. I think there still can be grading. I think there can be ways to make, one of the aspects of the part of the dunes that have been graded that I don't like, is the simple flat grass dead zone, it seems like. Whereas, when you go north into Chapman Point, those dunes are beautiful. They're steep, and they're rugged, and they're, they're not all grass, there's spots, and there's little lumps over here, and there's actually still some driftwood in there, and there's wild plants that are natural in that area, especially down low. So my hope is that we could create a policy that doesn't say grading for dunes, but still allows us, as partners of the city, residents, the state parks, he's not here, to create a dune that is enjoyable, beautiful, and in, maybe, I, I don't want to say this, but in maybe, there can be created view corridors through the dunes that are causing a lot of the problems for the folks that can't see the ocean. And figure those out in a better, more aesthetic way of manipulating the sand around.
You know, I think the, a lot of the language in the maintenance provision would address a great deal of that. They talked about maximum slopes that are allowed, topping unstable peaks, and again, that gets back to the slope, addressing, I don't remember the word, but cutbacks or blowouts, to smooth that out. And again, the slopes that addresses a lot of that. Addressing the revegetation would go a long way, and we'll undoubtedly have a long discussion about the various grasses. Some of that could actually, it might be a different requirement on a beach access vegetation versus a dune maintenance application, based on the, how the sand's moving, how steep it's getting, and whether you need to stabilize it more quickly, or let it soften out. I would almost recommend that the dune grading plan have the flexibility to propose different veget, revegetations, rather than us try to have a one size fits all on the vegetation. I think I've, I've seen indications that it may make sense to address it by each unique area. So, but that, that's going to be the discussion we get into. I think the, the slope and shaping can be addressed in the maintenance plan. And I see the maintenance being not maintaining a previous dune grading project, but maintaining the aesthetics and the character and the wildness of our dunes. And it's what so many people have come here for. I mean, we've seen the signatures and the comments that we've gotten on respecting the dunes, appreciating what they are. And so I liked what you said about, let's try to develop a, a vision for those dunes and how we maintain those dunes without just bulldozing and planting.
Okay.
And one way to prohibit grading for view, I mean, I think that's a, you're right, that's a big problem, and it is very narrowly focused. And that's not why we would do any maintenance grading or remedial grading, for different reasons.
So, given what Mike just said, I would have voted in favor of his motion, knowing that the rest of the discussion is going to be designing a dune management policy that is, covers Silver Point to Chapman Point, and has the aesthetic of Cannon Beach involved, so that the view from the shoreline up to the dunes is good, the view from the top of the dunes is good, the view from people's homes to the dunes is good. And that way we can hopefully, and it, it's going to take some testing, I think, because I think there's, like Bill said, the science is, is there, we need to use that as a tool, but I think our dunes are a little different than everything I've been seeing. You know, they keep talking about a four dune. We really don't have a four dune, because a four dune requires an interdune behind it. We don't have an interdune behind it. That's downtown, so that doesn't work. So our dunes are, I guess, unique to Cannon Beach, and so we get to play with them. Please, somebody else talk.
Well, I'd like to explore the, the aspect of the maintenance. So, if I'm understanding you correctly, the maintenance portion that you're talking about is separate from what it currently states. Because under, the current rules, the maintenance is up to the people that have been allowed to do it. And are you suggesting that it now becomes part of the policy too?
I'm, I'm not sure that's correct. I think there was always a provision that addressed maintaining the beach access, addressing blowout, addressing undercutting, and those were not related just to the areas that were in the sand management program. But, neither here nor there, I mean, that's something I think we do need to have, is the ability to go ahead and address the, particularly the beach accesses that our emergency vehicles need to have. We should be able to go in and backfill there and do what we need to do to get that access. But the pedestrian access is also, we've been in the process of practice of rebuilding the stairs for access. We get down to, right on the beach, sometimes we have an issue with state parks, over stepped and boundary, but we do need to find a way to address safe beach access. And anytime we do any sand movement, part of that plan, that permitting, that says, okay, you can go and move the sand for your maintenance, but part of that has to be by permit, and that permit should address the revegetation, how it would be done, when it would be done, and how it would be monitored and over what period of time. Problem before, we never got the reports we needed to make any conclusions as to how effective these plans were. And that was part of what drove us to get an update on the whole science program, because we had no data coming from the past umpteen years of sand grading, because we weren't getting, but random scattering of monitoring reports. So that would be, to me, it was still a big part of it. We need to monitor that, and specify at whose expense, at what timing, and so forth. We've got a great accent, an ascent here, and we really need to take care of it. It's, it's an attraction, and, you know, we're all about attracting visitors and having a great place for the locals to live.
I think also, I would like to add a little bit about the maintenance, the term maintenance would, it still has kind of two arms to it. One would be, once somebody has received a permit to do a job on the beach, then that permit, or that plan for that permit, would either include a maintenance plan for future, or it would be a single-off project of maintenance.
Okay.
That would be, that's, that's kind of a challenge between the, using that same word for two different things. things. I like monitoring.
I think that's where my confusion is coming from.
Yeah, and monitoring actually is a good term for the follow-up. Once a larger project is done, and there's been some maneuvering of a beach access or something like that, then that's coming back in. Public works would probably come in and check it every year or something, or some professional counselor would come in, not counselor, consultant. Something like that. But then there's also the idea of having a job that is very specific to one situation.
I just would like to kind of clarify, by way of example, the spot that we visited last on our tour, that they've mentioned that that required maintenance because they don't have it vegetated.
Right.
Now, is this something that you're saying would be able to continue?
So like, that's the remedial on Washington to First? Is that where you're thinking?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. So if those folks, that's a remedial, and in their case, it's maintenance, because they have to do it every year. It might be a situation where they might come and create a new plan to try something different there, or they just want to keep doing what they've always been doing. What I would ask of Jeff is to figure out some way to either do it by permit every time, or maybe they could figure out a five-year plan, so that they could figure out something that could respect it. That's the kind of flexibility I think we need to have within both the permitting for a project and the remedial. Remedial, I see remedial more as a staff response, whereas a larger project would be planning commission conditional use and follow-through with that system. I still think that's a good oversight system.
We don't want somebody to have to go through a whole permitting process just to get the sand back away from their doors, off their patios. That's the remedial, and that's just by going to the city and telling them what they've got to do, but it didn't require that more extensive permitting with monitoring and that sort of thing. That's remedial work.
Who do you see paying for the maintenance? If we don't allow grading for views, which would, the cost of that would be borne by the property owners. But if we allow maintenance of the dune to keep it in shape, basically, who pays for that?
Well, let's take the improving beach access or maintaining beach access. Some of those are the city, the city's doing it. Some are private property, and the property owner has to maintain it. That's the way it is right now. I don't see that changing. When it comes to, let's say, blowouts, breaching the dunes for protection, probably, I don't know the answer, I can see an argument for the city to be involved in that, because it's affecting, you know, block, overtopping. I would think that would be a city involvement in that, but maybe need more discussion. I don't know, maybe Jeff has an idea on that. But it seems like there's that. But let's say it's a big undercutting, you know, the king tides come in, and the dune face has been cut way back, and it's a risk of hurting someone. I really don't think there's a risk of it, and in three weeks, it's all softened out again anyway. But if there's an issue that's really unique to a particular homeowner's property, and they want it addressed, and the city hasn't seen that it's an issue from a public safety point of view, and I think the property owner actually will take that.
So it'd be a case-by-case thing?
I think it would be a case-by-case.
I think also, I will go straight to the problem, not the problem, but the biggest issue would be Breakers Point. So if Bruce came to us with a plan that had the mass of dune to the south of Breakers Point, the big knob out there, that molded the knob into moguls instead of one big hill, and that way, you would be improving the area in small bits over a long time period, not in one big push.
I think maintenance allows 2,500 cubic yards.
Yeah, so a little bit at a time might be a way to do it. I don't know. But if a long-term plan was created, and that could be done, that would be my way of looking at how to turn that plateau of sand into a more aesthetic sense of what's north of there.
I think too, on Breakers, when the, again, on that South Point, it washed out, and the utility lines were kind of hanging there, that was declared emergency, and I'm not sure exactly how that got accomplished, but I know the city jumped right in to help, and then got fined for it, because they didn't have good delineation of where they were getting the sand. But it's another case where I think the city said, there's a problem, and jumped in to try to help. I can't tell you what all the background is, Bruce probably could. But there's an area that does continue to get washed out, and that's going to be an area that's probably going to have a piece of a special issue at some point on how we deal with the creek coming there. And I don't, again, it's case-by-case, and we talk about sharing or who has to bear the cost. But again, that has nothing to do with grading for views.
One thing that came to me today while I was doing all this research and stuff, and this is just kind of from some of the comments that came yesterday, is the fact that we had a tough decision, and that compromise is hard to find. My hope would be that everybody leaves this room mad at us, because that's what compromise is. Everybody doesn't get what they want. So I'm hoping that we can find a way to redefine what we're doing with dunes. There may be a way that views are improved, there should be a way to make sure that the sand is returned somehow into the littoral system properly, according to the way that science has been told to us, and a way to manage the amount of sand that goes north every year.
It was all going south today, I'll tell you.
Well, it was going north yesterday, so anyhow. So again, I'm trying desperately to figure out a way to make this work. Again, I don't think everybody's going to be happy, but... Robin, do you have any?
Well, I do agree with you about, and Mike, about not having dune grading for view as being part of the topic. I'm not quite sure any further than that. I mean, this is such a new idea. I'd like to kind of think about it a little bit, I'd like to, but that's what I think right offhand. I think it's been very divisive and...
You know, removing grading for views removes the need for these various sand management areas, which then puts the entire beach on the same set of rules, the same plans, and the same capabilities to manage the sand along their set of beach. And frankly, I think it makes it much easier for staff.
I do think that we need to protect the habitats that have developed, however, and I worry about just some mass change of the whole escape, so to speak. I think that's what makes it unique is to have the difference. It's why we're one of the most beautiful beaches in the world.
Well, in what Sam says, we can maintain that. And what has just, to me, destroyed this dune scape and habitat is the previous practices of scraping the dunes. Those are all done from the beginning, suggesting we eliminate that, and then build this, maintaining the beauty of our dunes and our habitat and proper vegetation, and we can address those kind of point by point as we move forward.
A whole new stretch.
Yeah, and I think, I think we would want to be going through all the topics anyhow. So the topic of the environmental protection of certain areas would have come up to me eventually anyhow, and how, I think, the idea of being able to incorporate this from Silver Point to Chapman Point as one, we can look at it as one item.
I do agree with that.
I think that allows those border spots where you see all of a sudden, do no dune, we can start melding those. And maybe we could start testing little spots where the natural or the native plants might work better, find those. I don't think we're going to really incorporate them all over the place, but we can start doing some dune gardens of some kind. I don't know.
The alternative.
Yeah, probably.
One else would.
Okay, so I just had an idea, and I, Bill might have to watch me on this one. We had a motion on the floor, but you don't have to vote on the motion. We could literally go to another motion and let that motion sit under the second motion.
Yeah, I think, you know, technically, it'd be to table the motion and come back to it later, and I believe that's a secondary motion, that anyone can make to table Mike's motion, or it could be withdrawn, and, you know, go on to discuss other pieces of it.
Mike's the only one who could withdraw.
Right.
But if we just sat on it, we could go into further details on how we're going to handle some of the other aspects, or we could vote on it. That's up to the council. I'm just saying, this is a possibility. It allowed us to realize where I think the, at least Mike and I are, heading in order to create a new policy with measures that will address the value of the dunes. I don't know. Or we could vote on it and see how it goes and go from there.
If we voted on it, it just removes that from all the rest of the discussion. If we don't vote on it, and we don't know how that's going to turn out, we're going to have to say, well, if we do this, here's the rule. If we don't do it, it's a different set of rules. So I think to clarify it, and know really what our discussion is for, we really ought to vote on that. Don't have to vote on all the language changes, but the concept of eliminating that language in those provisions. So we may get into it and say, well, there are certain parts that we really do like, and we're going to be amending this thing all the way through. We can always add certain parts back. I guess I prefer to see a vote, so we're not doing what the planning commission did, and they made up two, they said, well, we recommend not having a dune grading for views, but if you do, we've got to do this. I don't want to be in a position where we say, well, if we do, this is what we'll say. If we don't, this is what we're going to say.
I agree with that, Mike.
They really had to do that, though, back then, because otherwise, they weren't really looking at the whole picture.
Yeah, and I think it was wise that he did, and it had given us some language to address how we will manage the dunes, the remedial vegetation, and all those things. So it was good they did that. We have a good document to work with, which is to put the rest...
I'd like to call the question then.
Okay. We have a motion to amend the comp plan to not permit grading for view. Colleen?
Counsel President Benfield.
Yes.
Counselor Rizzi.
Yes.
Counselor Olbey.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Mayor Stilwell.
Yes. Okay. So now, now we get to design a new policy.
So we might even want to go with another win here, which is, do you want to just adopt the Allen, the Science and the Allen report?
Hold up. That's, yeah, that's the science we have to work from.
Science and science.
I don't think there's any negative consequences from adopting that, because that's what we got.
We probably should.
So a motion would move that along really quick.
I'd like to move to adopt the Allen report.
Senator.
Motion to approve the Allen report, any discussion? Colleen?
Counselor Rizzi.
Yes.
Counselor Olbey.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel President Benfield.
Yes.
Mayor Stilwell.
Yes.
So the next, the next point was the extent question, and how, or if you want to discuss, I think what you were proposing, Mike, was to say, let's handle the whole littoral cell and get rid of kind of sub-areas, if you want to call it that. So I'll leave it to you guys, kind of discuss that, or...
I agree with that whole concept, because I think the entire, within the city limits, obviously, aspect of our beach needs to have the ability to have a comprehensive view of it. I think should homeowners or a group of homeowners, or the city, or state parks have a desire to do a certain section, that would be all described within the permit. So the permit would then say, okay, this, from here to here, a good example would be Washington to First. Those folks all grouped together, and they wanted to do something with their remedial aspect, they could say, we would like to do this and get a permit. The permit would then define what happens with that, within that area. In the process of getting the permit, the planning commission, would be the conditional use sort of process, would look at how that permit fits within its neighboring parts of the beach. That make sense?
Yeah.
That's just my thinking on it, so discussion on that.
How does that differ from what's occurring now?
Once these areas have worked created...
If you just take the view aspect off the table, which is a big consequence, but the result is, is that for one reason or another, people are still going to need to either, according to what you'd like to see, is some, call it tasteful sculpting of the sand, is that accurate?
Good term.
Or something in the remedial aspect, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
They can, there are a group of neighbors that got together, and they're funding that work. Keep in mind, there's only one subunit in Breakers that had grading for views. The others were doing, maintaining the beach front. We've got our new ordinances in place. They still come back as a group and make an application for permit to continue doing what they were doing, and planning takes a look at it. And planning takes a look at it, and they go, okay, you've got to comply with vegetation. And we will address at some point, believe, that was one. The only one group wanted to do that that I'm aware of, but, so they can still...
But two are doing it.
Well, they, yeah, they're still going there to share in the costs and say, well, all owners here want to do this, here's a joint application, and we can make sure that it complies with the current, within the current ordinances on all the issues of time and vegetation.
Okay.
The quantity and whether they want to do it as something anticipated, doing every year, you want to have some limit, well, maybe good for four years, but you're going to have to submit reports, maybe you don't want to do it once. You had something that ended with a permit that they could look at.
Clearly, there's been a problem with that aspect of it, so if there was some way that we could, you know, put some teeth into getting the results.
Yeah, and maybe one way is only have it for one year at a time. And if they haven't complied...
I think that would be an excellent idea. I'd be willing to go with two years, but...
Yeah, one year doesn't do it. A year or month, but after that, if they haven't complied, they don't get to do it again.
Jeff, what do you see in terms of the advantages and disadvantages of the sub-management areas versus the entire beach, entire area being...
You know, I'm not the best answer to that, because I've not historically dealt with them, and, you know, over the times and what you have to, it seems to me there hasn't been clear, clear understanding of how the, you know, how often they're supposed to be monitored, who's in charge of that monitoring, and then financing of that monitoring, and then a lot of what I've seen as I've gone back through the records is that some have been handled differently with different people in my position. So, it'd be difficult for me to give you a good feeling on that, but from what I'm hearing here, it sounds like to me is that what we would call this number three, four dune grading plan that someone would bring in, they would still bring that plan in, it would just be called a maintenance plan now. And then they would then have to, with that, give that monitoring plan, which they're supposed to do with this maintenance plan anyhow, and then that monitoring plan, whether you want to keep it at one or two years, that's what they have to meet those standards within that. That's my take.
And Council McCarthy, one, in your question about the full dune versus management areas, I think the key, as I look at it, you know, and haven't spent too much time thinking about it, is certainty versus flexibility. With the sub-areas, you know what areas grading is going to be allowed in, and they're limited to, you know, these two or three spots. With the, you know, and so, someone who doesn't live near there knows it isn't going to happen anywhere else. With the full area, it does give more flexibility, so that if conditions change, it's not a, you know, the process is much simpler for somebody to come in and deal with a specific issue that comes up, but then somebody who lives next to an area where there hasn't been grading in the past suddenly finds that there will be grading. And so, you know, there's that flexibility to respond to different circumstances versus a certainty of this is exactly where the grading's going to happen, I think is, you know, from my perspective, biggest difference.
And to speak with, from what I heard from the public, what this does, the difference so far from what I've heard, the direction tonight, the real big difference is, you not only are taking away those boundaries, but now you are going to be allowing without, from my understanding, you wouldn't require, say Chapman Point area wants to do some grading now, that has never done grading before. Before, under the current, you'd have to come in, got a comprehensive plan amendment, go through all the steps to get there. I have not heard that, you know, that is still the course that you guys are wanting to take on that, if you're getting rid of these kind of sub-areas.
Okay, so if you get rid of the sub-areas, then that still requires Chapman Point to come in and get a plan amendment?
See, I don't think, from what I get from your direction is that you want to get rid of sub-areas, so then how do we define that?
And as I understand it, and I could be hearing you wrong, it wouldn't require a plan amendment to allow Chapman Point, however, there is still the plat restriction that would still have to be dealt with in some manner or fashion, and they would still have to get the conditional use permit from the Planning Commission.
So, they would still have to come in and have some work done?
Yeah.
I think the only reason that there are these groups, that most people agreed to cover the cost. Last time we did it on Presidential Streets, one property owner said, well, I want to be part of that, too, and we agreed, made it a larger group. So, it wasn't like there was some science behind the boundaries of that group, it just had to be, the property owners that were willing to pay for this, you'll allow us to do it, and submitted their plans. But the, anywhere up and down our beach, our beach, we can bring it in.
Yeah.
There's going to be the issue of one individual, I want to grade in front of my place, the property owners on either side don't want it.
Well, I'm sorry to interrupt, but that is one aspect that I really agree with, is that I don't see the one-off, you know, being of a benefit. I'd like to see it, you know, in a wider area than just a single property owner.
And there's the standard for the distance.
Maybe we can address it. It's changed from the very beginning, even in 18, that you've got to consider the impact on neighbors.
There is a big one.
Yeah.
I would think that would have to be one of the critical criteria in the conditional use permit, is, you know, you've got to show that there, either there are no impacts or all impacts on adjoining a nearby property or properly managed in some way.
And there is a notification requirement, too, right?
Yes.
I think we would be designing all the criteria to make that as strict or as lenient as we want. So, that's the whole idea, is how do we design that to be as effective as maybe the zones are currently, you know, but still allow that flexibility that it opens it up for everybody in a fair system. And another concept that came in one of the letters, and I can't remember which one, somebody mentioned the idea of, and I'm not promoting this, I'm just mentioning it, taking it out of the Planning Commission's hands and putting it into a special dune management organization of some kind, that would then have stakeholders involved, and they would be part of the decision-making process. Planning Commission is just there and ready to go.
I must have blacked out from that, I said.
Yeah.
Two panels.
I mean, as four of us have already been on the Planning Commission, I've seen, you know, more than a few of these when I was on the Planning Commission, as did you and Mike and Sam as well. I would be very hesitant to agree with that.
And I think that's why we...
Be something entirely new.
Recreate the criteria and make them clear and succinct and easy to understand, rather than some of the other criteria that we have. So, okay. What do you need for...
Well, I would say that, you know, some direction on this concept of no boundary type of, except from, is it Silver Point?
Silver Point.
Silver Point to Chapman Point. You know, if that's the concept, then we can go back and look at the ordinance, kind of draft something towards that, you know, or all the changes.
And I think it's heavy in the permitting. What is the permit?
Yeah.
And the permit would define as much as possible.
Yeah, so we would be getting rid of such as the Haystack Rock area, the downtown, Presidential, all those different little units, okay? So, it touches each one of these levels as...
There'd be some significant changes.
But the next topic then would be vegetation.
Do we want to vote, though, on the first, the management versus...
Do you need a motion on that, or just a direction? I think it should just have a direction, write up something, so that we then vote on that. I think that'd be a better way to go on.
Direction. Direction makes it easier, you don't necessarily need a formal motion.
Yeah, because I think that we're going to be working on this one a little while. Okay.
Okay, so, did you have anything else, Mike?
As long as you're clear on the direction.
Okay. If not, we'll talk about it again.
At least for...
We'll let you know.
Okay, so, next up was vegetation, and there's a few different points of vegetation, and this comes from page three of the Comprehensive Plan, that this is the component that deals with vegetation in the Comprehensive Plan. That leads, that leads down to pages four and five, the four dune management plan, where they talk about the different points of vegetation. And then also, pages 18 through 20 talks about in detail the different parts of planting. And then those play out all the way down into the zoning ordinance, is pages nine through 11. The main points, at least maybe to start off with, was, were the, and I heard in your earlier discussion, is maybe a fairly flexible notion that you might want to have a range, allow the, just like the Planning Commission, which would allow any of the different grasses to be used within the plan. Do you all have any discussion on that point? At least that's what I heard from you, Mayor.
I think you have to be very careful to not pay attention to what the different groups like Oregon State Parks are advising. I think that that, until that changes, it's going to be a problem.
So, any direction on that you all feel?
I read through Sally's report quite a bit. The emphasis that she stated kind of towards the end was the fact that the American is becoming dominant and that there is a hybrid emerging. When I walked through the dunes, I saw all three of the named species. Granted, there was a dominance of one, and I don't see us in any way being able to eradicate one or the other. But I would like to see a method where an effort could be made, maybe, in some areas, that people could either test it, try it, blend the grasses, test to see if taking a dune and putting one species on one, on the winded side, and one species on the leeward side, and see if that makes a difference in how the dunes build, things like that. I'd love to see that kind of experimentation happening. And I would also like to include finding as many of the native shrubs as possible that do grow down in the four dune area.
So, you're saying that we're going to be creating a situation where no one can walk on the beach because we're doing all of this testing?
No, I wouldn't, I would not have a testing situation where there's a fenced-off area. I would test it as a living dune, where people and dogs dig holes and play in it, because that's just as much a test as not. So, no, I wouldn't say that. But I would say that as far as the vegetation, I'm reading through all of those, that was pretty complex. I would, I don't know, Bruce kind of mentioned the fact that fertilizer and pesticides, I would just eliminate that idea.
I completely agree with that.
If it isn't that all that necessary, just get it out of the documentation, so we don't have to worry about it.
Yeah, a lot of people from Breakers Point said that.
Okay, well...
But the way the language is now, presumably it gives you an option, what to put in there, gives flexibility, and with the permit, you specify what you plan to do, but you have to, rather than need to say, artificial fertilizer.
Yeah.
The only thing that I could possibly see is allowing some type of certified organic fertilizer, in the event that they needed to get some type of special plant to grow, in the case that you're mentioning.
Yeah, so the natives.
Native species of some sort.
Bruce, what's been your experience with that, getting the grass started? Do you need the fertilizer?
Does not need fertilizer, just planted in November, December, January, February, March.
Oh, so the timing.
The way it appeared.
Yeah.
So, that's something else that needs to be specified.
I do think they do need to state that planting is required.
Yeah.
I would also, rather than blanket planting, anything that's disturbed, allow a, some flexibility, so if a, I'm getting kind of creative here, because that's where I come from, but if a lump was to be pushed out a little further than everything else, maybe one side of that could be planted, or there would be a gap between where the lump was and where it wasn't, just because that's what the north Chapman Point area looks like. When you go straight down that, the Seventh Street thing, there's lumps out there, rather than grass everywhere. That's just my aesthetic point of view.
I also liked Kathleen Sace's suggestion for some of the native plants to be planted in some areas, but that might bring back some more wildlife and some more native species.
And the ordinance, we encourage use of native plants, as well as, where the bayberry grass is made. If it's an area that's going to have high erosion, they want to grow bean grass. If it's in a sheltered area, maybe that there's a lot of native plants, and so forth and so forth. We need that flexibility, and I think that's why the permitting process is important. But the people viewing that have to have awareness of what those options are. And maybe even organic fertilizer, if you can't plant in the fall and winter season, we've talked about, but it's necessary to get vegetation started and listen to optimal season, maybe, and that's for the... You've got to provide those flexibility.
And so, season, the seasonality, you know, I think the recommendations, there's really two different timeframes, the one that's recommended by the Planning Commission that's in the document, and then it's also been mentioned to move that back to more of a fall schedule. Is there, you know...
What was it that Sally Hacker suggested? Wasn't it the same as what Bruce was suggesting?
Yeah, I guess, the only thing I caught from her was that the native grass needs to be a little later in the spring, whereas the other two are earlier, when it's wetter. That was just what I caught from her, but I would almost rephrase it to say something like, no planting or grading between May and November, and let the permitting work with the, I don't know, call it a developer, but the applicant, to sort out the best time that they know how it works. I'm talking to Bruce, because he knows... I'm talking to Bruce, because he knows the most about it, but that way the scheduling is, the only time we don't want it, which is in the summer, obviously.
Okay, so, any, any of, y'all fine with that kind of thought, to just put the no plants between May and November, and say encourage best vitality for whatever plant?
Unless it were to be some type of an emergency situation.
Yeah, where it's like an immediate, yeah.
Yes.
Which I think is currently in there, so we'll leave the, kind of the media one in there.
I'm always a little do this, this phrase, with maybe an application here, using the best practices.
Yeah, yeah.
And by accumulating these reports of monitoring, we should be able to build us a library of best practices with, not only the timing, but the north slope, the south slope, the, you know. And then, still have all these options, but use best practices on every individual application.
Yeah, okay.
I also had a question. We haven't talked about how the, the 25 feet versus 35 feet.
Oh, that's later on, but I mean, that's okay. I'm glad you brought, bring up any ones that you, the other one in this is spacing, I think was the, a next one that I was going to talk about in the replanting. I think we've heard different variations on what the distance between spacing of plantings should be.
My preference on that would be random. Sorry, Bruce, I just wanted to look at the rows of these hair plugs, you know. But random.
Is there, yeah, maybe a density, that's what I was going to say, instead of, okay.
They look pretty like Sam's.
I guess. Okay.
Well, go ahead and address that 35 versus 25.
Sure, I mean, we just, we'll skip that slide when we come to, yeah. It's, so it's, you know, it's currently in the document, I think for 20, recommended as 20, but 35 is the current standard.
I would stick to 35. I've seen what, what the landscaping is based on.
Yeah.
For new construction, maybe you change it, but then you've got two different sets of the land. Let's leave it at 35.
I would too.
One question about that. Because really, the only example that we saw of that as a council was, you know, applicable to Breaker's Point. But how would that affect the presidential streets?
They all have to cross oceans, so that would be a, in that case, it would affect the Washington to First folks, because they're right up to the dune.
Because there's no street in front of them.
And right now, they're just pushing it out over the dune, which is well beyond the 35. But that then falls into the, the line of, I read that somewhere else. The boundary of where, yeah, the distance that we can go from a house to the state park's boundary. That would be the only area where that might be a little contention between the two rules.
Yeah.
Could they get a variance on their conditional use for spacing in that, in that respect?
I don't know. Or we have to pick one of the rules and stick with that.
Yeah.
I don't know, on the, on those that have a road right in front of them. How many might actually be by code, if any, but if you think of a 15-foot setback.
20-foot road.
Forty feet. Only a 30-foot road. Again, your 35-foot frame, and you don't have the measuring tape and find somebody.
So, the practical reality is that if there's a road there, the road is the buffer.
There might be a bunch down in Tolavana, too, because they're right up to the front.
But they don't have a dune.
They got a little bit of grass out there.
So, you mean the, the section just south of the Tolavana Inn?
Yeah, or even north. There are some homes that are right up enough to the front that they're going to get sand in their front yard that they're going to want to push out. And if that goes beyond the 35, or if that runs into that, there's a name for the line, but I can't remember.
So, I guess one of the clarifications, and this is a point that, you know, I think when you bring up presidentials and, and into this discussion, what we're talking about is remedial grading. What presidential's been doing is maintenance grading. Remedial grading states, and this is from the zoning ordinance, page 10 there, and the new, and the new draft there, says remedial grading is the clearing of sand necessary to maintain the function of a structure. Removal of a sand that has built up against exterior walls, doors, or windows, and that blocks access to a residential or commercial structure, or may cause damage to these structures qualifies as remedial grading. That's the only thing that's 35 feet, it's from the structure. Not a fence, not accessory, it's the structure of the, yeah, itself.
Okay.
Okay.
So, it doesn't include their landscaping?
Just the structure, 35 feet from the structure.
Yeah, it would include the landscaping within that 35 feet.
And is that correct?
You can push, you can push the sand back 35 feet from that structure. And then, if you want to landscape that area, you can.
Okay. So, I, I'm just sort of seeing something, you know, that, if somebody wanted to push the dune out to that 35 feet and increase their yard.
Maybe it's got the, with sand.
The sand has, has to be threatening the structure, it has to be, you know, it says, is the clearing of sand necessary to maintain the function of the structure?
Okay.
Now, the other thing, I, I would be hard to find, I think, a structure where you're measuring from the building that doesn't already have at least 20 foot a yard. So, if they're going a little bit beyond the 20 foot, because I don't know how many houses would have a front yard on the beachside, there's a few in the Tolavana area that would be deeper, but it would all be a backyard.
Nothing, so they have to go 35 feet, then go up to 35. Then just go to the road.
I'm just trying to see if, if you could take advantage of the situation. I see this as just a thought exercise at this point, so.
But it does initially have to be the, the stuff that was at the structure.
And I still think, I, I agree with the 35 feet.
I do, Bruce, I just, the only reference we have for that is what's been presented from Breaker's Point. You know, we're given a very good visual demonstration of that. But, you know, the situation is different in other parts of town.
Field trip.
Okay, what else you got?
All right, slope, I think, is the next one, that we had heard, the 25 to 33 percent slope is what is been recommended?
I got to put a view on this, but I'll wait for anybody else.
I'd like to, if you could, give us a practical, say, just in our minds, going from zero to a certain height, what the 25 to 33 percent would be? Say you had to, to get from 30 feet down to zero in.
Oh, so how many feet rise over run?
So, what, is this 40 foot? Not quite 40 foot? Bruce, do you know the size of this building?
I think Bruce measured it in one.
If you're, if you're 30 feet high in 25 percent, it's 401, it'd be 100.
Distance.
Okay, that's very good, thank you, Bruce.
Yeah.
So, getting back to, to our field trip, say, the, the main beach access now at Breaker's Point, going from there, where their little bench is.
Yeah.
On Fifth Street.
Fifth Street.
What do you estimate that, that at? That current slope?
I mean, where the path is?
Yeah.
All the way down to the, to the base?
Yeah. It's okay if you don't know, but I mean, I'm just trying to get an idea about where, like, does that comply? Or is that too steep, or?
It's not a constant slope.
Yeah.
I would say it's within the 25 to 33.
It, it isn't, and you're correct, but it wouldn't be that difficult to make it a constant slope. The difference of the two isn't significant, in my opinion.
And I think at a constant, it would be around 20, if you'd ask me.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, again, I'm being weird here, but I would like to give some variability. Just so that, what I would do is allow for areas to be molded a little more dramatically, but that anywhere that is a beach access, be very specific, to the, and stick with the 25 percent. And I know that would probably fall on the city to do a lot of the maintenance of the accesses. But at least in some of the areas where some molding was taking place, to allow for the areas that are more natural.
Yeah, I think that this, you know, so I would, from what I've, what I'm hearing is 25 percent max on any beach access, but everything else can be shaped to, you know, maybe encouraged to 25 to 33. Our, the experts, I think, spoke, said that you can shape it 25, 33, or whatever you want, but wind and, and, and the ocean's going to put it at whatever it should be, so.
Bill?
I just kind of recorded a little bit about when you said the city's going to take on some of those accesses. I'd, I'd want to be very careful about heading down that path, because it wouldn't, you know, you don't want to take on maintaining accesses like that, because it, it can get expensive, there are ADA issues and, and other things. I think you can regulate them, I think there are other pieces that they're going to have to comply with, but, you know, having an access, you know, maximum slope isn't a bad idea. But just be careful about something where we head down, taking, taking them over in any way.
Right, thank you.
If you're going to get a 401, you may have pushed the sand out quite a ways, and the next high tide can, then you've got to sheer.
Well, that's just it, yeah.
Yeah.
Thinking of the weather and high tides and climate situations.
Just even the grain size is going to make a difference.
We might need more investigating there.
The idea of having some natural availability makes some sense, but in terms of what to do with the accesses, that might take a little more digging to bring something back.
Okay. I did notice that in, in the documents that were explaining how to measure what those slopes were, that was really complex. 1,100 cubic, no, 1,100 square feet in profile, from where to where, that just blew me, I, sorry.
Well, and if you're making a pathway, that's the path of least resistance for high tides and going up, and then it'll just take it away, so I think we need to think about it.
I agree, I, I'm just trying to get an idea about what the actual slope would look like. Clearly, there's some serious issues, just trying to get that.
Yeah.
One of which would be, you'd be creating a funnel for the wind, and just allowing it to go right back where it came from.
And I would, I would like to have the flexibility of somebody designing, you know, if it's a long beach access, like Fifth Street is, is to wiggle it, or curve it, or split it, you know, do things like that, so it's, it does alleviate that concern of being a funnel, both for the wind and for high water. Might be a way of, of creating something a little different.
I think the language up there on, on maintenance, on organ shaping, I, I think those percentages work well. Need to have a separate section for beach access, and those will be case by case.
Yeah, that's.
I mean, we got those, we've got stairs.
Yeah.
Some places, another place, you don't, you just walk out.
Exactly, yeah, and that's what I was going to, I was going to say.
Okay, I should have read that.
My next rule. Then, we were, though, I did want to cover some more details on the grading, because as you said, there's a few points that we haven't really mentioned. Also brought up by Breaker's Point is the, whether we allow it down to six foot or nine foot NGVD, where we're going to push the sand, and then at what depth we're going to allow that sand to be pushed at. And so, I think in this document, you can see, not exceed a depth of 24 centimeters sand deposition up on, in the comprehensive plan language. Plays out also in the organ management plan, page 15 there, and then also down to, further in the zoning ordinance changes. And so, any thoughts on any of those elements that come up within those details of grading? Or is this something we want to kind of get into further?
I think a minimum dune height is essential, to pick a spot to say, this is as far as you can go when you start molding things around. I'm still a little iffy about what that height is, because there's too many numbers up there for me to figure out which one's which. I don't know, that's just that. I'm sure we can go back through Alan's report and find the one that fits.
I think, I think Alan, I think Alan says BFE plus four, and then I think the planning commission added the one foot.
Right. And goal 18 specifically requires a minimum dune height and width required to be made for protection. The minimum height for flood protection is four foot above the 100-year flood elevation, and as Council McCarthy said, the planning commission added some extra protection on top of the minimum four foot.
Yeah, and just a little tidbit that I've learned is that slow sea rise is not affecting us specifically, because our plate is rising faster than the sea is, which is an intriguing little fact.
That's why the sand's building up.
That's why the sand's building up, and that also means that when it does decide to drop, it's going to be worse. So, I don't mind the extra foot, but I don't mind the four foot either.
Well, I think the planning commission had a lot of testimony on it, and various reasons decided that extra foot was important, so I'd, I'd stick to the extra foot.
And I'd like to see the depth change from 24 centimeters to 12.
12 centimeters?
I, I still, in, there's been so much discussion about where the sand goes compared to where the clams live. My understanding is that we don't really push the sand out to the low tide line.
Isn't that because we can't?
Yeah, because we got.
Well, it can, but it implicates Army Corps jurisdiction, which is a whole nother layer.
And that was referred to, I believe, yesterday.
Yeah.
At the risk of, what is that layer?
You've got to get an Army Corps fill-up permit under section 404 of the Clean Water Act, one of, a certain Clean Water Act, and it just is another really significant set of hoops to ju- hoops to jump through.
Yeah, Jay Sennawalt said that when you do dump sand, it needs to be 12 feet tides, and I looked at the tide tables that I've got, and they only go up to nine. So, we will have to work with the Corps if you want anything different.
So, what you're saying is that the.
That's what I was playing with.
The Corps states that you need a 12-foot tide in order to.
We have, we can't push sand out to the, beyond the 12-foot tide line, I guess that's what that means, which means that we would never really be covering where the clams live. So, the whole concept of, you know.
I believe, and I'd have to go back and check this again, the Corps jurisdiction starts at the mean low tide line, so there is, you know, I'm not a clamor, but I think that, you know, there may be some clams above that mean low tide, I just don't know exactly where those clamors are, but I think there is the potential.
Well, I'm kind of ambivalent on the whole idea of what the clams care.
I don't really like clams.
Isn't the camp clam that cares?
I'm sure they do, but I'm, you know, my concern almost is more that we get sand back in the littoral system. Obviously, the little bit that we get back into it isn't going to be dramatic, but it's And I don't see us loading up dump traps and hauling it down to Tolavana, so as much as, that would be kind of cool, but I don't see us doing that.
Some people on the planning commission were not in favor of that.
I'm sure they weren't. So.
So, what about the 12 versus 24 discussions here?
Well, fill in again, the, it's the blue versus the red.
Okay, so the blue is something that should have been undermined in the previous and is not, it's just.
And the planning commission is recommending 12 meters?
Right, yeah.
Well, with the amount of sand that we're now looking at for maintenance, you know, moving, probably 12 centimeters is going to be all right. You're moving huge amounts, 24, maybe could be required in order to move up the sand. Didn't find to stick to 12, but couldn't have it, but it's hard in keeping with protecting our wildlife, our marine life. Had a much higher survivability at the 12 centimeters than it did at 20.
Did this define the width at all of how much sand, you know, could be pushed out?
Yes, I think that's.
That coming up?
Exactly, there's, I think it's, there's two different kind of measures. One says, in the management plan, the lower force slope will extend positive feet out seaward from secondary force of press down to elevation nine, that gets down to the depth, which also the minimal cross section area that must maintain zentup in 100 square feet of dune, both still water flush elevation.
Doesn't really address the width of it.
Yeah, I think there is another section.
It is a requirement of Goal 18, so.
That's what I was thinking of.
But it doesn't seem to cause any controversy.
I was just, I was just thinking, is the, you know, if you have an area where the clams might be threatened, the narrower the area, the less threatened. The other thing might be to have an assessment done prior to the permit to see if there's actually clams there. I don't know, I don't, I don't dig clams myself either.
But that's.
I have heard.
Every year.
Yeah, but if, if there's one winter.
Themselves, and then it takes years.
And again, I don't know, that's, that might be another science question, we have to find somebody who can explain clams better.
And that could be part of the criteria when a plan comes in to demonstrate that it will have, you know, minimal or no impact on, on clams.
Yeah, and again, that would be, you know, if they're going to, if the choice would be to go through a full push all the way out into the water, so that the Corps of Engineers are involved, and it gets more elaborate, yeah, I could see that.
Yeah, I mean, it could be demonstrated, if you're not going to push into the wet sand at all, there's not going to be an issue.
Yeah.
Or it could be, if you're going to push deeper, you're going to have to show more.
I think it's past eight o'clock, I would like to call it for the night, and we'll.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's.
Well, I think it's a perfect time, because if we can get into kind of the permitting process next, that's a great.
Okay.
When did we have in mind that we could continue?
Yeah, when are we?
Do you want to do it sooner or later, or?
I could do it sooner, just so that we can.
Well, it's fresh in our minds.
Next week on Tuesday? Do we have an opening? Is that enough time for notice?
I'll be in before.
Yeah.
A week, just as long as it's not the 14th or 15th.
Okay, the 15th is what you're saying.
Oh, just not as long as it's the 14th. I think my wife said the 14th.
So, next Tuesday, is that what you, 5:30?
I have a time for some appointment.
Doctor, Wednesday?
Yeah.
Everybody good for Wednesday? I think we're all okay. Colleen, are you okay with Wednesday?
16th at 5:30, Wednesday.
Okay. We will adjourn for the night and move for more discussion on Wednesday.